Good morning and welcome to the March 16th Board of County Commissioners meeting. I am Kate Flavin and I'm Public Information Officer. Commissioners, I'd like to remind you and everyone to sign up for your monthly newsletter to be sent out this March by the end of this month. And you can go to our website, www.sedgwickcounty.org and click on this handy little infographic here to fill in the information and select which newsletters you would like to receive. And with that, I'll let you start your meeting.
All right, well, thank you, Kate. Appreciate you introducing the meeting this morning. I will go ahead and call to order the regular business meeting for the Board of County Commissioners for the month of April the 16th, 2016. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Reverend Sherdel Brethett, Sr., St. Mark United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Commissioners, and let's pray. God, we pause this moment just to say thank you. Thank you for this beautiful day, the weather. We thank you for your presence. Your word is very clear in Proverbs 3:5 and 6. It says, "Trust the Lord with all of our heart; lean not to our own understanding, but in all of our ways to acknowledge you, you promise to direct our path." God, we're needing your direction. We need your guidance. Be with this commission as they make decisions, God, that impact this community, this city, this county, this region. And God, may you get all the glory, all the honor, and the praise in Christ Jesus' strong name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Brethett, thank you so much for the prayer this morning. Appreciate you coming and encouraging our hearts this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Anru.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Chairman Howell.
Present.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak this morning? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and go on to the next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation welcoming Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority 86th Midwestern Region Conference.
Commissioners, I do have a proclamation to read. And is Ms. Joy Barnes here this morning? Very good. I'll go ahead and read this and we'll present this to you in just a moment. It says, "Whereas members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and Midwestern Region, which includes the local Beta Kappa Omega and Epsilon Alpha chapters of Wichita, are hosting the 86th Midwestern Regional Conference on March the 16th through the 20th, 2016. And whereas the regional conference convenes several hundred members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority from the states of Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, Oklahoma, Iowa, Colorado, Montana, and Wyoming, the conference is an opportunity to showcase how members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority use leadership skills through service to improve the quality of life for all mankind. And whereas the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is an international service organization founded in 1908 on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC, it is the oldest Greek letter organization established by African-American college-educated women. And whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha's mission is to cultivate and to encourage scholastic and ethical standards to study and help alleviate issues negatively impacting local communities and to be of service to all mankind. And whereas Cedric County is honored to have Midwestern Regional Conference in our community this year, and we thank members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha and the Midwestern Region for their commitment to service and to the advancement of girls and women. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Jim Howell, Chairman of the Cedric County Commission, do hereby welcome members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority to Cedric County for the 86th Midwestern Regional Conference. In Cedric County, I call this observance to the attendance of our citizens." Commissioners, what's the will of the Board?
Let me adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Let me have a motion in a second. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Anru.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye. And of course, Ms. Barnes is here to receive that. And would you like to say something real quickly?
Yes, real quick. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners and the Council for requests, I mean, for giving us this proclamation. The conference actually kicks off tomorrow, and so the streets will be painted with pink and green with over 600 women within the Midwestern Region, so we're just happy to have it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Barnes, for being here today. And we look forward to having those folks, those visitors to our community and hopefully spend a lot of money here.
Absolutely. We like to shop.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item B, a resolution adopting the International Building Code 2012 edition.
Recognize Tom Stoltz, our Director of Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Tom Stoltz, Director of the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department here today to discuss the adoption of the new commercial building codes for Wichita-Cedric County jurisdiction. As you recall, last month, I was here for a public meeting to discuss the code adoption for this commercial building code. We are, we have historically, within the last year or so, adopted new trade and residential building codes, and we are now similarly looking to adopt 2012 International Building Codes here today. Over the last year and a half, staff members and members of the Wichita Area Builders Association, along with commercial builders and design professionals, have been reviewing the local commercial building code together so that a reasonable and best practice code can be adopted. These discussions were shared at four public meetings attended by builders, architects, engineers, and developers. And the code adoption with amendments was passed by the Building Codes and Standards Advisory Board by an eight-zero vote in our January meeting. And finally, this code was presented to the Commission last month at public meeting. Like other government jurisdictions around the country, Cedric County has historically adopted local building codes from recognized national and international organizations. Members of these organizations are industry experts in the fields of residential and commercial building construction, and the code guidelines that they produce every three years generally are viewed as best practice for the construction industry nationwide. As I previously mentioned, there are several reasons to adopt new code in this jurisdiction. First and foremost, it represents a way to enhance public safety for our citizens through best practice application regarding designs and construction of homes and commercial buildings. And it also helps to keep building insurance rate at the lowest possible level. Secondly, it helps to ensure basic consistency of building practices between jurisdictional lines in consideration to building professionals who operate in and around Wichita-Cedric County. And finally, it serves to achieve consistent and fair operational protocol for building professionals who are licensed and operating in Cedric County. There are two parts to the code adoption process. First, we have to do an extensive review of the incumbent code and compare it to what is being proposed by the new code. And secondly, we then have to discuss amendments, which are local in nature and differ from the base code. These amendments serve to provide several benefits. First of all, they can give relief from regulation of the national code, which we decide that don't make sense for this local jurisdiction. Secondly, they cover the adoption of local trade codes, such as Uniform Plumbing Code or the National Electric Code that we choose to adopt here locally. They reference ADA standards, which are enforced in the state of Kansas, and they connect to local fire code-related matters directly involving the state Kansas Fire Marshal's Office, the Wichita Fire Department, and Cedric County Fire District Number One. Many of the amendments being reviewed today are carryovers from previous code cycles. However, there are some that we discussed in detail at the public meeting held last month. Specifically, Section 10 of the resolution today, which deals with when permits are required in this jurisdiction. The code calls for building permit to be pulled when a structure reaches 120 square feet or greater. For several cycles in Wichita and Cedric County jurisdictions, this number was amended to, say, 200 square feet. During the public hearing, we discussed the possibility of increasing that number even more. After discussion with staff, we have increased this number to 400 square feet before requiring a permit in unincorporated county. We will still keep it at 200 square feet in City of Wichita. We also corrected Section 10 to reflect that no location permit is required in county jurisdiction, but is still required in City of Wichita jurisdiction, and we also removed the anchoring requirements for structures built in unincorporated county. Section 32 of the resolution, which deals with fire sprinkler requirements for A2 classified structures, was discussed. A2 assembly buildings are commonly built structures for restaurants and nightclubs or food service industry. The new code calls for sprinkler systems to be installed in all-new construction of this type when the fire area exceeds 5,000 square feet or when the occupancy will rise above 100 people. Historically, the City of Wichita Code Department allowed for an exception to this code, which allowed an occupancy of 300 people. When the code departments merged in 2013, this exception was carried over to the unified code. The proposed amendment today continues to allow the 300 occupancy number, but requires the builder to add a third exit or fire alarm system to the building. Thus, the new amendment proposed today is less restrictive than the 2012 code, but more restrictive than the previous amendment. This proposal was a compromise between fire officials and local builders and developers, and after further discussion with staff and with commission after the public meeting, we have kept this amendment the same for today's resolution. Sections 27 and 35, similar to these amendments, were developed in partnership between builders and Wichita Fire Code officials. Both of these amendments address large-scale storage facilities, most notably pertaining to aircraft hangars. The 2012 code calls for a sprinkler or fire suppression system when the building reaches 12,000 square feet in size. Historically, the City of Wichita Code Department allowed an exception for aircraft storage buildings to reach as much as 26,000 square feet before requiring a sprinkler system. When the code departments merged in 2013, this exception was carried over to the unified code. The new amendment today is a compromise between the old amendment and the new code, allowing storage areas of this nature to be built at 18,000 square feet before a sprinkler system is required. After consultation with officials from Cedric County Fire District Number One, these current amendments were to be specific to the City of Wichita jurisdiction only. County fire jurisdiction wished to continue to adopt the 2012 building code as its standard. After last month's public meeting, it was clear that a majority of the commission expressed an interest in keeping this amendment language consistent between county and city jurisdiction, and today's resolution will reflect that. So the resolution today states 18,000 square feet. Section 37 of the resolution was brought up by Commissioners during the public hearing. Essentially, this proposed amendment requires that emergency egress openings have to be 48 inches high in addition to the 30 square inches required by code. This is an amendment that had been in previous code and is supported by Wichita Fire and Fire District One officials. Since the discussion of the public meeting last week, I have again talked with fire officials from both city and county jurisdictions. The amendment was originally adopted after fire officials proved through simulation that the 48-inch height is needed for the safe extraction of people from a building or the safe entrance into that building by fire officers wearing breathing apparatus. The City of Derby has adopted the same amendment into their local code ordinances. We have left the amendment in place for today's consideration and for further discussion. At this point, I think that I know there'll be other questions. I want to conclude my comments and stand for any questions that you may have. And County Fire Marshal is here with me today, and Mr. Latt, who's the Assistant Director of MABCD, is here also to help me answer any technical questions. So, thank you.
Mr. Stoltz, thank you for the presentation. The first thing I might notice is on the slide that's on the screen right this minute, the last statement, Section 37. I believe according to my paperwork here, it should be Section 36 for the openings. Is that correct? I'm seeing in my backup material here, looks like it's Section 36 for the egress openings.
Let me double-check that, Chairman.
Commissioner Ranzau.
You're correct, sir. That is Section 36.
36, okay, thank you.
Take it on the slide.
Tom, I just want to clarify a couple things. First, on this hangar, right now, the code in the county says 26,000 square feet.
The unified code says 26,000 square feet.
And that's been in effect for how long?
Since the unification of the code departments in 2012.
2012, so the last four years, it's been 26,000. Now we want to lower that to 18,000.
That's correct. And I might qualify that. The 26,000 has always been an amendment in the City of Wichita jurisdiction. It hasn't been in the Cedric County. When we amended or when we unified the departments in 2012, 2013, that amendment got brought over, so.
So it has been in the county since 2012.
That's correct.
To be 26,000, and we want to lower it.
That's correct.
And let me, and then back on Section 32. Can you clarify for me, fire speaker requirements? What's required now? Go back and say again, it's more restrictive, less restrictive than what?
Okay. First of all, this deals with assembly to occupancy. So these are buildings which are, by code definition, are restaurants, nightclubs, or food establishments, generally speaking. The code calls for a fire sprinkler system to be added when the fire area reaches over 5,000 square feet or when you decide you want to have, as a business owner, more than 100 people in the establishment. That triggers the need for the fire sprinkler. Historically, in the City of Wichita, that amendment, the amendment existed, which would allow that number to go from 100 to 300 occupancy. So you have 5,000 square feet of fire area, and you could have up to 300 people. The 2012 code wants that number to be 100, so Fire Marshal in the city met with a lot of business owners, and they were averse to that restriction. So they worked out the compromise that if they put in the third exit and/or fire alarm system, they could continue to have their occupancy at 300 people. So this amendment historically has existed in City of Wichita, did not exist in Cedric County until the unification of the code departments in 2012. And so what we're proposing today, or what the Fire Marshals are proposing, is that we have this compromise exist so that we can get people out of the building if it starts on fire, that's the need for the third exit, or the early warning alarm system to let people know that an incident has happened, which will get people out of the building faster in lieu of the fire sprinkler system.
Okay, so, but for years, we've allowed up to 300 in the city.
For at least 10 years.
For at least 10 years.
Several cycles, yes.
Now we're going to make it more restrictive.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Same with you. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stoltz, on Section 39, I don't think you talked about this during the slide presentation, but Section 39 on standpipe.
Mm-hmm.
I read in the backup material, it sounds to me like standpipe systems are required if the, it says if the floor level of the highest story is 20 feet above the lowest level of the fire department vehicle access. In other words, when the fire truck pulls up, where the tires are sitting, that's where it's measured from, I assume.
That's, I think that's correct. I might ask the Fire Marshal to come up and hit the standpipe topic, Dan, if you want to come up.
If you don't mind, I'd like to get a better explanation of this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Wagner, Cedric County Fire District Number One. How can I help you?
Well, on the standpipe regulation that's being proposed here, I'm trying to understand what it says. And so it's talking about the lowest level of the fire department vehicle access.
That would be from...
So I don't know what that means. Is that talking about the building entrance?
That'd be the roadway where we have our vehicles at.
The roadway?
Yeah.
So if the roadway...
The ground level of the building. So wherever that is.
Measure to the floor level of the highest story. If it's more than 20 feet, then a standpipe system must be installed, is what this is saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I was misunderstanding you when I read this earlier about access to the standpipe system. This is whether the standpipe system is needed or not needed. This would trigger the need for a standpipe system.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And of course, in the city, it's 30 feet, in the county, it's 20 feet, being proposed by this regulation. Can you explain why we need something that's 10 feet shorter than the city?
Operationally, we operate on the floor below the fire floor. So if we're in a third, three-story building, we don't have a standpipe system in that building. This code would get us a standpipe and get us water on that second floor where we can establish our water supply, give us a place of safe refuge, and conduct our fire attacks on the third floor of that building. In the Cedric County, we have fewer resources and a longer distance to these buildings. So if we've got an apartment complex that's three stories tall, and we've got a fire on the third floor, this allows our crews to be able to operate safely, quicker, and get water to the scene in a better means.
What you just said a minute ago is basically response times are longer because we've got a very large jurisdiction.
Right. The distance between our fire stations is larger than what it would be in the city, so it takes us longer to get resources to that scene. And when we've got to pull hose from the trucks to the third floor, it takes time. It takes manpower, and this allows us to do this quicker, more effectively, and safer.
All right. I think I understand that one now. I'm going to continue thinking about this. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you. If I can jump back, I want to make sure, and Fire Marshal Wagner, if you can, you or Tom can help me out in terms of, I want to make sure I understand, will the square footage provision, if we're at 18,000 square feet, will that be different from, the City of Wichita will remain at 26,000?
Pipe.
Section 27 and 35?
18,000 across the board, sir. City and county jurisdiction.
18,000 for both city and county.
Yes, sir.
So that would be a level, that would be the same for both?
Correct.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, I have some more questions about the standpipe height. What does the code say now?
30 feet.
30 feet. And it's been that way for how long?
Since 12th, 12th adoption. We amended it to 20 feet when we adopted the 2012 fire code. So when we adopted the 2012, we lowered it from 30 to 20 feet. So we've been in effect since 2013.
But before that, it was 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
And the city can do it at 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, thank you. And clarify, back on the hangar thing, we're going to go to 18,000, but that means the city is actually lowering its threshold from 26,000 down to 18,000.
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, can we go through this list real quickly? We talked yesterday about what are the sections being proposed that are more strict or more restrict, okay, so more restrictive of the code that's changed this year?
Mm-hmm.
Can you highlight those items as we go through this list?
Sure. And there's a list of, you know, we have 70 amendments here.
Right.
And then within that is a small number of restrictions that are deemed more restrictive than the code that's being proposed. Section 25, which deals with door width required, Cedric County and Wichita and the state of Kansas have adopted ADA code as the standard. The building code often refers to what's known as ANSI standard, which is American National Standard Institute, and sometimes the numbers for accessibility are slightly different. So for example, in Section 25, the 28-inch standard, which is listed in code, is an ANSI standard. ADA code requires door width to be 32 inches wide to accommodate wheelchair access to more accommodate wheelchair access. And so just the fact that we've adopted ADA, in Cedric County, we're straight across ADA. In the City of Wichita, we have what's called ADA+, which we discussed about a year ago. Anytime that we see reference in code, which is ANSI standard accessibility requirements, which are different than ADA, we automatically go in and grab the ADA numbers. That's the case in Section 25. And while I'm on that topic, that's the case in... Section 47, same issue, size of doors in I-III occupancies, which are generally jails or custodial-type facilities. That number went from 28 to 38, 32 inches, same way ADA. Landings of doors, Section 49, more restrictive. The ANSI standards are 44 inches. It's a landing outside of a doorway, and the ADA standards are 48 inches. Okay. Another more restrictive amendment being proposed that we haven't talked about yet is Section 43, which is the requirement of fire horns and strobes at the connecting point for the fire departments outside of buildings. The code requires that that be clearly marked, and I might ask the marshal to come up if there's further question on this. The horns and strobe are required in this jurisdiction to make it more visible, so if there are trees or other natural devices in the way that the fire department can clearly see when they're rolling in where to hook and connect their equipment. So in this jurisdiction, that's an additional requirement.
You say the word "connecting," what do you mean by the word "connected to what?" The fire hydrant or...
Yeah, to the actual building.
Oh, connect to the building itself? So they actually get the water from...
Yes, sir. They've got a fire department connection in the building to augment the sprinkler system in there.
Okay.
So the strobe just gives us a visual cue to say, hey, right below here, this is where we hook up to it.
This is part of the fire alarm system that's in the building already?
Yes, sir.
So it's just basically...
The horns, the horn strobe combination only activates if we have an activation of the alarm or the sprinkler system.
And just for clarity, is this a new requirement, this, in this adoption of the 2012, or is this something that's been in place before now?
This has been in place before.
Okay, yeah, and that really is my question on really all of these, is what are these things we're talking about that are new, more restrictive this year in this proposal? Again, so this is one of those things that's been around for at least a little while.
Yes, sir.
It's not new, but it's good to know, but more restrictive, and we've had some history with this, it's...
The sprinkler system, the code requires that they use a water gong. One of the problems with the water gongs is they get birds building nests in them, they don't always function. And they're expensive. Actually, a horn strobe system, I don't know what the exact numbers are, but are a little bit less expensive than the horn gong thing. So we have both a visual and audio cue that we've got an event going on in the building, and we know where the fire department connections are.
That does make sense. Okay, well, thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
Please continue.
I think...
I have one more question.
Let me stop for just a moment, Mr. Stoltz, and Commissioner Ranzau.
Let me clarify on this, the standpipe thing. It's, right now, it's 20, but what does the national standard recommend?
The code that we're adopting, 2012 IBC, is 30 feet.
Is 30 feet?
Yes.
So we're being more restrictive than what the code, the national standard code recommends?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want, thank you.
I think that might be all. Section 69, prohibited doors. This is more of a, this has to do with elevator doors, and this is language which allows buildings with elevators to put fire-rated doors on the outside of the elevators. I actually was talking to the Fire Marshal before the meeting. He would be okay exempting Cedric County from that if the commission would be okay with that. We would keep that standard in the City of Wichita jurisdiction, but we could take that restriction away.
What number is that?
Section 69, prohibited doors. When you build a building that requires, or you have elevators in it, there is a lobby required, and in some buildings, that is not feasible. So this is an alternative for buildings that cannot have a lobby through structural design, and it allows them to put fire-rated doors in and automatically closing doors in the event of a fire. So it's actually an additional option for those types of buildings, not necessarily a requirement. It is more restrictive because you'd have to add the door if you don't have the lobby area, but if you have the elevator lobby area, then this does not apply. This is a little bit complex, but it is still a more restrictive requirement if you don't have a lobby.
And just for clarity, is this a, is this a new idea for this adoption?
This is new, sir. Yes, it's new in this adoption.
So you're telling me, just again for clarity, our fire experts here are not necessarily opposing the idea of us not making this change?
Our county fire expert is saying that.
County fire expert?
Our city fire expert is not here, and I think they would, I think we'd like to probably keep this in the city jurisdiction.
Yeah, okay. So I anticipate some interest in probably not adopting Section 69 change.
Good. He would be okay exempting Cedric County from that, if the commission would be okay with that. We would keep that standard in the city of Wichita jurisdiction, but we could take that restriction away.
What number is that?
Section 69, prohibited doors. When you build a building that requires, or you have elevators in it, there is a lobby required, and in some buildings, that is not feasible. So this is an alternative for buildings that cannot have a lobby through structural design, and it allows them to put fire-rated doors in and automatically closing doors in the event of a fire. So it's actually an additional option for those types of buildings, not necessarily a requirement. It is more restrictive because you'd have to add the door if you don't have the lobby area, but if you have the elevator lobby area, then this does not apply. This is a little bit complex, but it is still a more restrictive requirement if you don't have a lobby.
And just for clarity, is this a, is this a new idea?
This is new, sir. Yes, it's new in this adoption.
So you're telling me, just again, for clarity, our fire experts here are not necessarily opposing the idea of us not making this change?
Our county fire expert is saying that. Our city fire expert is not here, and I think they would, I think we'd like to probably keep this in the city jurisdiction.
Yeah. Okay. So I anticipate some interest in probably not adopting section 69 change.
Good.
So let's put that on our list of things to talk about here in just a moment, but Commissioner Ranzau, please continue.
Okay, but that's an attempt to give another option?
Correct, sir.
Right? To people?
Yes.
Well, is there a way to give another option? I like options. Is there a way to give option that's not as, that's not less restrictive?
Not that, not that we discuss during our public meetings with the developers, and not that the fire, the city fire marshal could come up with.
Going through this list, I'm trying to figure out which items are, which things are more restrictive that are new this year, and again, I'm not exactly sure if I can...
I think of all of the more restrictive, of that half a dozen or so amendments that we have listed that are more restrictive, there really is only one that's new, and that's section 69. I think the rest of these are carryovers. I think that when we have discussions, why no, that when we had public meetings, and I know when we talk with fire staff, just because we carry something over doesn't mean we shouldn't scrutinize it if it's more restrictive, and we have been pretty vigilant in looking at that. The marshals, city and county, and the developers want to keep some of those more restrictive items, and we bring them forward to you then for discussion. So, but most of these are, all of them except ones that I can see are carryover.
Back to the standpipe regulation, I understand the, I understand the explanation that was given, but I'm wondering, you know, when Wichita fire department shows up to a building that's higher than 20 feet, they've got to pull hose up to that higher level. It takes them a certain amount of time to do that, and if the building is engulfed in flames, it's not safe to do that, they're not going to, they're not going to make an attempt to put out that fire, they're going to attack that fire from someplace a little further away, or whatever, not going to put themselves in danger. So if we get to the building and it's, because it takes us longer to get there, our response time is a little bit longer because of the type of area that we have to cover, seems to me that that would still be the same thought when you get on, when you get on scene if that fires and get to the point where things are not safe to do so, you're not going to, you're going to have the same thought process that WFD has. And so I'm not sure I understand the reason as to why, I'm still struggling with as to why ours would be different than the city's. We have the same hose, they don't have any equipment that we don't have, do they? We have the same equipment available.
The equipment and stuff's the same. It's just a logistics address. You know, of course, you know, if the building's totally involved, we're not going to go in there, but if we've got a single room that's involved in fire and we can go in there and make an interior attack, this allows us to establish our water supply where we need to have it established.
Okay. And I do, I do understand that. I think that's, that's correct. I accept your explanation, that does make sense to me, but why would WFD and Cedric County need to be different, though? Can you explain why, other than response time? But when you get on scene, your decision process is exactly the same, I would think.
It is.
Once you're on scene, you're...
It is.
So whether there's a standpipe or not a standpipe, I guess I don't see why they would have a different standard than what we would have. If they're following the national, the national standard, and it's okay in the city, and it's been this way in the county for, in our history, why would we want to take a more restrictive...
We just looked at it, that with the development going around Wichita, or actually in Cedric County, we're having more hotels and more taller buildings. Until recently, we really didn't have, you know, three and four-story buildings to contend with. As we're building more of these, we were addressing the issues, and from a logistics and tactics point from us, this makes sense for our department to make us more effective in how we do our jobs. So that's, that's why the change.
But if they're three and four-story buildings, they're going to be over 30 feet?
Yeah, and that's already in place. I'm talking about the three-story buildings where we currently don't have a standpipe system in it.
So you want the current buildings that don't have one to go back and put one in?
No, no, any new construction, it comes into play. If the building's already in existence, we don't make people come back and put them in.
But if they're a three-story building, they're going to be bigger than 30 feet?
Yes.
If they're a two-story building, they're probably going to be bigger than 30 feet?
Well, they're at the 20-foot mark, so it's the two stories.
Earlier, you talked about a third story.
Well, if you're looking at 12-foot for a story, okay, it comes into play when we add the third story into the building. So we're talking a three-story building, because currently at the 30-foot, it'd be a 36-foot building, which doesn't necessarily require it either.
Let me interject. So a two-story building, the floor of the second story is about roughly, say, 12, 13, 14 feet above the ground?
Yes, sir.
So that, that is not going to be a problem on a two-story building.
Right.
A three-story building, it would be, because it's probably going to be in areas, say, 25, 26, 27 square feet, 26 or 27 feet off the ground. So that would trigger, in our, in our case, if we adopted this as proposed, that would, that would trigger a standpipe requirement?
Correct.
In the county. But in the city, of course, they would have to go to the fourth story.
Before it triggers.
Before it would trigger this, because then it would be, you know, something above 30 feet, something like 35, 37, 38 square...
Yes.
Feet elevation. So the four-story building, regardless, will always have this, city or county. As is proposed, the three-story building in the county would require this, and would probably not, would not require it in the city, assuming that the, the feet per story is approximately 12 or 13 feet per story.
Yes.
That in four classes and that type of thing. Okay. Do we have, I'm thinking about around the county, do we have a lot of buildings out there that are this third story? I mean, I'm trying to think of, you know...
There's not a lot.
Near the city of Wichita, certainly. No question there, but...
But we've added some, a few apartment complexes and stuff, and apartment complexes are seeming to be built more. And again, there's some sprinkler requirements that come into this, so it's not going to be applied very often, but in the cases that a, it is going to be required, it would trigger it.
Is that considered a commercial building if it's a apartment complex?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay.
It's a multifamily.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. I'd like to ask a broader question, just so I make sure. I know we're looking at this code strictly for the county, for the unincorporated areas, but I do know that our building inspection folks sometimes are contracted out to do inspections in particularly third-class cities, and I was wondering if, if the codes that they'd be inspecting to would, in this case, probably follow the county code or something else.
Great question, Commissioner. There's actually three things going on here. There's, our building department covers Wichita City and Cedric County, and there are nine Class II and III cities that also have an MOU with MABCD that provide services for that city. So when we adopt things and we say Cedric County jurisdiction only, that would incorporate the Class II and III cities as well, and the city of Wichita would be separate and distinct by itself. Section 10 that we altered says unincorporated county regarding the 400 square feet of, before a building permit is required, the, no longer requiring the anchoring, unincorporated county only. So in our Class II and III cities, unless I hear from those city officials, I will keep that at 200 square feet, which has been the history that we've been adopting from cycle to cycle. So that's a good question. Generally, by and large, you are correct. When we say Cedric County, we are bringing in the Class II and III cities who have an MOU with our department, but there are specific times, and the building permit requirement is a great example of that, which will only involve unincorporated Cedric County.
Well, then, we've had a lot of discussion about the standpipe and how that would fit. Would they have their own provisions, or would they fall under the county or city, or it would vary by jurisdiction?
Anybody that's covered by Cedric County Fire District Number One would have the 20-foot requirement. So if they're building a building in that jurisdiction that Marshal Wegner's department covers, we would require the 20-foot.
Well, let me ask you then, we've got a number of second and third-class cities that are in the fire district. Are those primarily the ones that are covered under, we've got 20 incorporated jurisdictions entirely or partially in Cedric County? And you say we've got nine that are falling to the second and third class, are all these second and third class, the nine, within the boundaries of the fire district, or is it, it's a mixture?
It's, it's going to be a mixture. I know, for example, Colwich, we have an MOU with Colwich, but I know they have their own volunteer fire department, so that wouldn't be in District One. But by and large, I think that is true. Most of these Class II and III cities are within fire district number one.
Well, because my concern has been to try and have a level playing field within Cedric County, so that if we're looking at develop, developing a property, or someone's trying to grab their piece of the American dream and build a building, we've got a level playing field between jurisdictions as much as we can, and that's why I very much appreciate my colleagues' questions in terms of trying to understand how we can try and create that level playing field for all the participants and not put us, not put one jurisdiction or another at a competitive disadvantage or an unfair advantage. And, and that's why I'm raising the questions that I have today, and I appreciate the answers from both the fire department, as well as yourself, Tom, and the other MABCD folks who are here.
Thank you.
Not to, not to, where are you at, Mr. Stoltz?
Oh, I got a morning.
I'm sorry for the repeated question here, but section 39, section 39, I'm sorry, section 69, once again, 69, regarding the extra door option. As this is currently written, the, the extra door, extra doors near the elevator would be prohibited. And we're talking about, if we deleted 69, if we took out these changes to 69, then they would be allowed. So is that, or do I have that backwards?
You might have it backwards. The, this amendment deals with elevator doors, and the differences here are elevator doors that want to have additional fire-protected doors, which, and it then spells out the automation that those doors need. The automatic closing device shall be limited to an approved magnetic hold-open device, et cetera, et cetera. It begins to give specifics on how those are to be built. As Commissioner Ranzau brought up before, this is not required if you have elevator lobby. Not required. You can put them in, it's free world. You can put them in if you so desire, and this will give you specifications on how to do that legally. For those buildings that don't have a lobby, this would be required. These types of fire closure doors with all of this instruction on how to properly do it would be what our inspectors would look for when they go out to look at the building.
So if we did not adopt this change, it would give us a little more freedom to find a, gives us other options if we did not adopt this change?
We could look for other options. In our discussion this time around, during this cycle, during our meeting with developers and during our meeting specifically with Wichita fire officials, we could not, there was not any other options. But if you want county fire to be excluded from this, I think we can, and I think the marshal, like it said, now, look for other options to hit what you guys want to hit, which is, let's give people options as they build these buildings, do it safely and within code.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Couldn't you allow the same door with or without a lobby? To me, that's the easy way.
You, if you don't have a lobby, then it's incumbent upon the building owner, the building designer, to put a fire suppression system in to where smoke won't go up the shaft, that the doors will open, that, that the elevator will come down when a fire event happens, and that fire officials can get into the door. There's a lot of things that happen to elevators during a fire emergency event. And this particular piece of the code requires that door to be installed, that fire protection piece of that door to be installed if a lobby does not exist. The lobby gives protection, and if the lobby cannot be there, then this gives a bona fide option for people to put extra doors in to give the protection that will keep the building safe. Almost need fire marshals up here to talk about this one. This is, it's a busy amendment.
What constitutes a lobby? I mean, is there some, how would you, how do you know if it's a lobby or not a lobby? I mean, I've gone to a lot of buildings and...
Sure.
Maybe you have to walk through a door to get into an area where you wait for the elevator, or maybe it's just open to the rest of the space. Yes, go ahead.
Bud Latt, MABCD. A lobby requirement would be an enclosure around where the elevator, the axle doors to the elevator, open and shut, to protect that area from smoke penetrating through there, getting in that shaft and going up, where it's not necessarily tied to Commissioner Ranzau's question on the width of the doors. This is a protection, a way of protecting that shaft to keep the smoke out of there, which would be accomplished with an elevator lobby.
And so the lobby is an enclosed space, in other words, there's a wall and a door that separates that from the rest of the building?
That's correct. And this lobby, the doors to this lobby are going to have these same requirements by, by the code. They're going to have to have the smoke seals, they're going to have to have the automatic closing doors.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you for that explanation. That helps a little bit. So a lot of buildings I go to that have, you just walk from the front door of the building right to the elevator, that, there is no lobby, obviously, in that case. If I, if I have to walk through a doorway inside the building?
Correct.
Then that would constitute a lobby. Okay. So I, most buildings I visit, I'm sure, probably are considered buildings that don't have lobbies in that, because very rarely have.
Epic Center, for example, has a lobby. You've been in the first floor of the Epic Center. The doors coming in and going in, protect the, separate the lobby from the rest of the first floor.
I see. All right. Commissioners, yeah, but any other questions before we take action here? All right. What is the, Commissioners, what's the will of the, what's the will of the board, then?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may add, I have... My concern is making rules and regulations more restrictive than necessary, more restrictive than what the code says. And so there's been some good things done on here, there's some things that I still I think I personally would like to see some changes, but I don't know where the other commissioners stand, and I don't know if we would be able to do that today, or would want to do this at a later date. I'm open to what the other commissioners have to say, but there's about four things that I'd like to take a closer look at. Section 69, I've oscillated back and forth on this meeting, and I think I'd like to keep it, because I think it is an attempt to give people more options. I think I can make an argument, you can make it even more flexible, but if this, from what I'm understanding, it is an attempt to give them another option to do it if they don't have a lobby. That's all I'll say.
May I, Commissioner Ranzau, may I ask? Okay. Section 69, I actually have some concerns about that myself. Section 39, standpipe heights, I have concerns about that, and so I guess I would entertain a motion that would adopt the rest of the code. If there's other sections you'd like to pull out of this for our first motion, we can, we can process these exceptions a number of ways. We can either handle them specifically as a separate item, or we can even defer those for a week or two until we understand these a little bit better, which I think may not be a bad option. But I would like to see if we can adopt as much of this as possible. So again, there's two sections, 69 and 39, that I would like to personally have them accepted from our initial, hopefully, our initial option to adopt this code.
Well, I agree with 39 as well, and I would, I have some questions about section 32 and 35 as well. But those would be the, so for me, four, four areas. That being said, I do want to say I'm appreciative of the work that the staff did with respect to section 10. I know we got some input from the public, and they took a look at that and made some changes based upon that, and I do appreciate the willingness to take a look at that, Tom. Thank you.
Let me also express appreciation. This is a, it's a tough process to go through this, a lot of details to adopt a new code, code standard, and by the way, I'm not sure if you said this or not, but if you didn't, let me just ask the question. What is our current standard now? We have, this is a 2012 code we're considering right now.
We're in 2006 International Building Code.
And just curiously, is there a, is there efforts being done today to develop, I guess, the next iteration of the code book that we'll adopt at some point?
2015, oh, yeah, they make them every three years. 2015 has just been printed, we're already starting review of that, probably a year or so out before we come back to look at adoption there.
So again, so we're actually jumping six years almost to...
We're jumping a cycle.
Skipping a cycle. So again, I just want to say thank you. I know this is a very difficult process to go through all the, the complex descriptions of all the, I mean, a lot of different topics in here, so I want to just really say I appreciate you and your staff and others that have worked very hard to bring us a very concise summary of things we really need to know about to do this, because we're not experts. We lean on you guys to, to really lead us on this. I just really appreciate the good work that you all have done. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. Thank you. If I can speak clearly, I'll try my best. I think I've got a bit of a cold. I'd agree with the comments of Commissioners Ranzau and Howell. Just for questions, Commissioner Ranzau, he mentioned several sections. I want to make sure that I've got them, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-nine, and sixty-nine? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be willing to, certainly willing to adopt this section, bring it up, and we could pick these others, bring them up at, at a later date. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, I also want to express appreciation for you and all the work that's gone on with all the partners and the tradespeople and the experts in this field that brought this recommendation to us. I'm inclined to, after hearing all the discussion, to be supportive of the, of this agenda item as it, as it stands, and then amend it as we see necessary, rather than hold out some pieces. And I, I guess I'm just asking for your opinion, is, would you and the folks who have to work with these prefer that we go ahead and pass this as you have presented it to us, and then come back to you with amendments? Or would you rather delete these things and leave it, or does it make any difference?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with whatever the will of the commission is. If we want to drill down on some of these, it's easy to say, we'll adopt everything as written, and just take out those amendments for county jurisdiction. That's, that's a simple fix. We could bring it back. We can get that done, bring it back, even on consent agenda, and you guys can approve it. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, if that's, if that's what we're talking about today. Just taking out the amendments for the four sections that were mentioned. I'm comfortable if we want to adopt as is today and continue to drill down on these and come back at a future meeting and modify the amendments. I have no problem with that either, whatever, whatever the commission desires.
Okay, so there's no critical argument one way or another?
No.
All right, thanks.
To our staff, let me ask, what is the latest? We can add something to the agenda for next week? Is it tomorrow or Friday? Manager, do you know?
We publish the agenda, the final agenda Friday morning, which means it goes to the printers Thursday. But we could delay that. So, if we had something by five o'clock Thursday, we can get it on the agenda.
Chairman, I might mention, I'm taking this same proposal to the city council on April the fourth or fifth, whatever the Tuesday is of that first week of April. So, if you would like, we could come back that Wednesday, which would, I think April fifth is a Wednesday, I'd have to look at a calendar. But if you'd like, we could drill down and look at these further and bring it back for a while.
There is some advantage for us to deal with these before it's presented to the city. I mean, ideally, we would be past all of our questions. Hopefully, you could present to them where we are, and they can certainly take that as a-
That would be an advantage, yes.
It would be better for us, I think, to have this done, if possible, before you present this to the city.
Okay.
And we do only have one more meeting left this month before you present this to the city. That would be next, next week, the twenty-third.
Okay.
And so, I guess, it'd be my, it'd be my hope that we can work on this today and tomorrow. I would like to go ahead and ask staff to add this to the, to the agenda for next week, and if we can't be ready for that, we can always take action to defer it further. But I guess I'd like to try to give our, our commissioners a chance for them to ask questions and develop an opinion between now and tomorrow, when it, that, well, I guess, this is assume, this is going to assume that we can get this done next week, add this to the agenda next week for these four items. If we're not ready by then to take action, then we can go ahead and just defer them further. But I guess that would give us a chance to hopefully have this resolved entirely before this is presented to the city. I would prefer that, if possible, so. Commissioner Ranzau?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we defer this for one week.
Commissioner Ranzau, let me just ask a question quickly. Would it, let me ask Mr. Stolz quick. Would it do any good for us to adopt this code with these four exceptions, and then deal with the four exceptions next week? Or does it matter just to defer the entire item till next week?
I'm, I'm good with either, what you choose, sir.
So, Commissioner Ranzau, your motion is to defer the entire item until, until next, next week's meeting, and then, and then hopefully we can take action at that time?
Right. I just thought it would be cleaner, if, if we want to approve everything except those four, that's fine. I think we end up at the same point, but this way it's, it's all together, because I think we're committed to getting it done by next week.
If there's no advantage to doing it one way or the other, then I guess, I get, I think we've, I think we've got it down to the areas that we've got some concerns about, that we can, we can work on that, and we'll plan on taking this up again next week. So, that is the motion.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? One thing I did not do, and I, I wish I would have done earlier, but let me ask the public, is there anybody out there that would like to speak to this item before we take any final action here? Okay. So, our motion is to defer it till next week. We have a motion in a second. As you know, further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the good discussion, and we will hopefully get that completed next week. Our goal. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item C, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on March tenth, two thousand and sixteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of March tenth results in four items that we bring to you this morning. Item number one is river sand for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Martins Central Sand Company Incorporated, and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number two is bridge improvements for Public Works. This bridge is located on Forty-Fifth Street North, between Broadway and Hydraulik. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Claver Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Item number three is the two-seven-one building renovations for Facilities Department. The recommendation is to accept the low bid, including alternates, from Commerce Construction Services Incorporated, in the amount of seven hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. And our final item, item four, is for on-call plumbing services for Facilities Department. Recommendation is to accept the proposal from Commercial Trade Services, LLC, and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for the presentation. Commissioner Peter John?
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the recommendations of board and bids and contract, and after the second, I've got some, want to throw out some comments to, I don't agree.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Peter John, you have further comments?
Yes. I know there was a lot of work by county staff to, on the building renovations at two-seventy-one, and with a figure here of just under three-quarters of a million dollars. I appreciate the hard work that has been put into getting that, and the fact that this is a number that is going to be well below a lot of the initial numbers that had been thrown out. And so, I'm very pleased and going to be supportive of these four items today, but I wanted to draw some attention to item number three, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. And me just, I guess, again, I may use round numbers, but in my, my recollection, our first, our first presentation of the remodeling of this building was roughly a million dollars per floor. It was close to six million dollars for the entire building, and, I mean, so what we've got right now is a, is a much more affordable option. And I anticipate it's still going to be very nice. You're going to walk in, it's going to look like a nice building, and we'll be very proud of it. So, I am thankful for the work that you have done and others to bring us a very competitive bid. I do have some questions on item number two. I notice we only have a single, a single bid there. Can you, how do, how do we know that we have got a good offer, a good, a good bid on this item? Can you talk about that just a little bit? I mean, this is one-hundred-and-eight percent of the engineer's estimate, I see that, and they're allowed to let contracts up to one-hundred, one-hundred-and-ten percent of the engineer's estimate?
Yes, sir.
Are we, are we confident we've got a good bid here? I mean, how do we know that?
We had discussion with Public Works the other day, and we also made a, reached out to the vendors who didn't quote on this project. And what we ascertained was that, due to several, major, major project at Kellogg, with the several bridge, bridges being worked on at that, at that, at this time, many of them said they just did not have the crews to work on any future projects for, for the time being. And then, after talking to Mr. Spears and Mr. Weber, we felt like this was a, a competitive bid. Would you agree to that, Jim?
If I understand correctly, we did, I guess, sixteen companies, I guess, were for certain, were informed, I guess, of this opportunity, and only one bid. And so, I guess there's a lot of construction going on in Wichita, which, again, when you have cranes and cones, I guess that means that's good stuff for the community at the end of the day. It's, it's rough when you're trying to get around town, but after it's all complete, it's pretty nice. Commissioner Ranzau?
Just along that same line, isn't our expectation that for the next few years, there's, there's numerous projects being done around that are ongoing and that are going to be planned, that it may be, that the, the bids that come in for some of these projects for a number of years may be a little bit higher than, than what they have been recently? Is that our general expectation?
We're going to struggle for a while, I think. I was driving out of Kellogg yesterday. I counted nine cable cranes, two hydraulics working within view of Kellogg. Every one of those cranes is a crew, so there's a lot there. KDOT has let the series of bridges up on K ninety-six that will fire up pretty soon. We've got all this stuff out on East Kellogg. Contractors are telling us that they've got some spots. It looks like this fall, going into winter, things may get better, because the KDOT bid lettings will be done and known. And we've actually, on a bid letting that we should have had Tuesday, we slid that one out two weeks, and we've changed the timing of that project to let construction begin in the fall, because we actually have contractors telling us that, you know, if we could get out to September, October, they think it'll be, be better. But it's a tough thing. You know, we have to guess what the market's doing, and we have to guess what the pricing is, so these estimates are a little bit, they're a little tricky. And we have to try to get them up high enough that we can cover it in one-hundred-and-ten percent, but we don't, we don't control them, we don't really know what's going on. As we see bids coming up, if we don't think we have enough people that have picked up plans, we're making phone calls. You know, did you see this one? Are you going to, you know, take a shot at it? And they're telling us, a couple of them are literally saying, we're not bidding anything for the rest of the year. So, we're going to struggle through this year. I'm hoping next year is-
Is better.
-next year is better. We'll see.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for that explanation, and I, and I think it's, we are in a good position considering all that's going on. We understand how supply and demand works, and right now, there's a lot, a lot of demand, and so, the supply is not what it would have been without all that's going on around the community. But that's actually a good thing. I think our community has, has seen a lot of investment by a lot of different governing bodies, and the, the construction is just amazing what's going on around the community. It's not, really not just the county doing a lot of work, but the city's doing a lot of work, and, you know, KDOT's got some very significant projects happening in our state on the Turnpike and, and our interstates around the city, so we've really got a lot going on. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just amplify on your, your remarks there, because there's a lot of talk about infrastructure and spending on it, and I think six hundred miles of county roads and the five hundred and eighty-some bridges, I believe we have, five hundred and eighty-two is what sticks in my mind, but I'll defer if-
Five ninety-three.
Five ninety-three is our number today. Okay. Five ninety-three it is. No argument from me on that. Taken as a whole, are in excellent shape, and I think for the state of Kansas, we're in, we're in good shape, too, and where we do have some problems, they're, they're being addressed and being worked. And you mentioned the project out there on West Kellogg, that's a hundred percent funded with county tax dollars, and, I'm sorry, on the local match portion is a hundred percent funded with county tax dollars. There is state and federal money involved, but that's, the local portion is entirely Sedgwick County. So, I think it's important for folks to know whether they're looking at a county road or a county bridge, or even in this case, it's a, basically, an interchange with an interstate highway and a major U.S. highway. Sedgwick County is definitely spending significant resources in this area, and I wanted to point that out this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go in just one final comment before we vote, but next week, the twenty-third, we do have Kansas, Kansas Department of Transportation Secretary Mike King will be here to present to us what's really going on around the community, and around, really around the state. We'll have a chance to see, I guess, a presentation, and we'll have a chance to ask him questions. But there's going to be even a greater understanding, I think, of what's really going on around us, and what the, what the bigger plans are. So, we're looking forward to having him, him visit us next week to have a much more in-depth discussion and have maybe a deeper understanding of what, of what's being done around our community. So, with that, Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second. Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hope, Assistant County Manager. You have items D through N on the consent agenda. Recommend your approval. In.
That's Delta through Nancy. If Manager Scholes was here, he would say it that way. Delta through Nancy. Okay.
November.
November. Yeah, well, it was the Air Force versus Army, I guess, you used different numbers. Anyway, we have, we were clear, D through N, and-
Mine's March eleventh.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Great. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Do we have anybody that's signed up to speak to the commission at this time? I don't think I see anybody, so we'll go ahead and go on to the next item, please.
Legislative issues.
All right, we have Councilor John Von Atchen. Am I saying that correctly? Your last name is hard for me to say.
It's hard for a lot of people to say, Chairman. It, you did, John Von Atchen, Assistant County Counselor. A few items today. One of them was, we found out this morning, has kind of gone away, but it warrants some discussion. Senate Bill four-fifty-one would have merged Wichita State University and the Wichita Area Technical College, and created the Wichita State Technical College. There's a actual, more technical name for it, but that's, the merger would have occurred, a similar merger has occurred previously between Washburn and Washburn Tech. Senate Bill four-fifty-one was very, it's very, it was a very different merger than the Washburn-Washburn Tech one. The initial proposal would have had the W A T C funds be completely within the general funds of the university, whereas the Washburn-Washburn Tech ones remained in the post-secondary education fund. There was a substitute bill floated around that would have created an additional oversight over not only the technical colleges, but the community colleges as well, that would have worked in conjunction with the Board of Regents. And I think that in large part is what, what killed, what killed the bill at this point, from, from what we've been told. The most important aspect of this that was not taken into consideration, and we did address it through our lobbyists and directly with, with Senator O'Donnell, was that we have a significant investment with W A T C and with the W S U, and we have both tax dollars and, and buildings involved with the W A T C and N C A T, and that we were, we were not going to be given a seat at the table in the approval of the merger. And so, we did raise the, we did inform them that, you know, this would be discussed today, and that I would be asking the, the board for the opinion on whether or not we needed to intervene and ask for some sort of approval authority over the, over the merger itself. to intervene and ask for some sort of approval authority over the, over the merger itself. But at this point, with the bill appearing to have been, to be dead, I don't think the issue is necessarily dead. It may not come up again this session. It may be in a future session, but I think now that the issue has been put out there that, that legislature is aware that we have a significant investment and that, you know, we should have a seat at the table when, when a merger is brought up again. And the merits of it, I mean, I think there's pros and cons with, with the merger. I think the primary thing is to ensure that those students who, you know, who aren't necessarily going to be university students, who aren't getting, who aren't using WATC to get some of their general ed then go on to the university, that, that, and when they're for technical training, that they don't get swept up in, in the merger and that those opportunities are still available for those, for those students who are there to learn a trade as opposed to those who are there to get, you know, a full four-year college degree at some point. So that, so that was, that's out there. It's, it's, I always say, you know, bills die, concepts don't. So that concept is still out there. May not come up again this session, but it is something that we did raise and I thought it was important to raise that, you know, we have an investment out there and, and if we're going to divest ourselves of the investment...
Let me just tell you as, as a former legislator that nothing's ever really dead in Topeka. There's about, about 100 different ways to kill a bill, but nothing's ever really dead. So at this point in the session, you can, I would not be surprised if, if a floor amendment popped up that this thing would just be brought back to life immediately. So it's good that we are having this discussion and at some point here, we probably need to have a little bit further discussion on developing a, a position for Sedgwick County and hopefully we can educate the legislators on what we would like to see them do with this bill, should this ever come back alive. Because this is our chance to, to act and react and we may not have that chance when this comes up on the floor. So we'll, we'll go through the other items here, I suppose, but we, we probably need to have a little bit more discussion about this Senate Bill 451 before we're done here today.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. One of the things that was tangential and a topic of discussion on Monday staff meeting were House Bills 2568 and House, and House Bill 2570. 2568 dealt with community colleges and 2570 dealt with technical colleges. The bills would allow the governing bodies of those institutions to institute a two-mill levy for a five-year period. Now with the technical college, I don't think is, would be as much of a concern for us considering the board composition, but it, it is out there. The one that's slightly more troubling would have been the House Bill 2568. It involves satellite campuses, of which we have three in Sedgwick County. Cali County, Cali Community College, Butler Community College, Hutchison Community College. I have satellite campuses in Sedgwick County. Now, I'm, I know the board is, is aware of how those governing bodies are, you know, are comprised and how they're put together, but the public may not know, because we don't have one here, that in, in the counties where those main campuses are located, those trustees are voted on by the public and those, those positions are elected. The bill would allow those elected officials in other counties to institute a two-mill levy on Sedgwick County residents for, for, you know, for people they did not vote on and for a tax that they did not vote on. And with three of those institutions here in Sedgwick County, you're talking the possibility of an additional six mills for a period of five years and the purpose of which is to either, you know, to acquire real estate and build it, and build it a campus or to acquire a building and remodel it for that purpose. And it would require, you know, that if, that if that governing body voted to do so, that the electors would have to scramble to get a petition together within 60 days to put it up for public vote, which is, even at a 5% number, is significantly difficult to do. So that's an issue of concern and a little bit counterintuitive considering all of the legislature's current efforts to have the electors have greater say and there's more accountability in, in raising of taxes and this one would seem to be a little less so.
John, let me interrupt you for just a minute. When you, when you said 5%, I may just miss the point. So the electors would have a petition with 5% of the electors signing that, which would trigger what?
Which would trigger a, a general or special election for, for the, the county in which the mill levy is proposed to occur, for the electors to have a vote on that mill levy.
So that's a, that is a, that's a, that's a proposed amendment to this bill or is...
That is actually in the bill.
It's already in the bill.
But it would not, for example, bring the issue before, you know, before the Board of County Commissioners in the county where it's proposed. It would require that the electors put together a petition.
For them to oppose this would require them to be successful in getting the petition and having the vote and then, then basically over, overruling that. But there is default, if they don't, if the electors don't do that successfully, then their, the default is that it's approved.
That it's approved.
I see. Okay. Before we go on, Commissioner Peter John has a comment.
Yes, I, I wanted to make sure first, you said Cali, Hutchison and the third...
Butler.
Butler. Okay. And let me understand this, if, if, if we're talking about a petition, if they basically wanted to impose a two-mill levy, would they impose it in their home county as well as in Sedgwick or would they, could they impose it in Sedgwick without imposing it in, in their home county, whether it's Butler, Cali or Reno Counties?
The, the purpose of the bill is to allow those institutions with satellite campuses to impose a mill levy in the county where the satellite campus is located, not in, not in the, not a, a sister tax in the county where the institution is primarily located. So for example, if, if, and not to pick on one, but if Butler were to do this, the Butler, Butler Community College Board of Trustees would institute a two-mill levy on Sedgwick County residents, but not on Butler County residents.
Well, I, this isn't a hard call for me. I think we need to be in adamant opposition for several different reasons. I mean, I'll go back to the taxation without representation on their board. I'd also cite the fact that this petition provision is a joke. I mean, 5% of all the registered voters to, to force a tax referendum? Any and all property tax increases ought to be voted upon by the people and to have legislation, this is an affront to common sense, in my opinion, for this type of bill. The other thing is a little bit of history. These satellite campuses for community colleges, when community colleges started to get, were, were being created back in the 20th century, there were provisions to keep them out of the counties where Regents institutions were located. Now, there's six counties that have Regents institutions. I could go through them here, but for purposes of time, I know that's of a concern to some folks, I won't, but just to say that if the community colleges wanted to expand into Sedgwick County, that, that wasn't the intent to have them do so. I know they've kind of got their nose under the tent a couple of different ways and that's part of the history, but the idea that we'd have a third party outside our jurisdiction imposing property taxes on us from the legislature, I, I'm, I'm appalled that this, that all ideas may continue to exist up in Topeka, but this is, this is so beyond the pale that it, it needs to be strenuously opposed at all levels. And just for the record, to get, to give folks some idea out there who may be following Sedgwick County government, we are deeply involved in the, in, with technical education. WATC, NCAT wouldn't exist without Sedgwick County's contribution. We're over $4 million a year in funding. Now, most of it's to pay for the buildings, but 10 of the 11 members on the WATC, NCAT Board, one's appointed by the members of this county commission, one's appointed by a member of the Wichita City Council, because we are on city land, on a 50-year land lease, and the other nine are all appointed by the county manager. So the county is up to its eyeballs on this issue and will be for as long as we have these, this area of structure and the board is fully responsible. If, if there is some sort of a merger and the Board for WATC, NCAT becomes advisory underneath WSU, which is one of the ideas that's been tossed out, that may change, but for this current commission at this time, under current law, we are deeply involved with WATC, NCAT and that's why we've got to focus very closely on changes in that operation, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranza?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with my fellow colleagues. Don't we have a legislative agenda item that says we support vote approval for tax increases?
Yes, that's on our legislative platform.
Right, and I think for that very issue, we should oppose these and I agree with what Commissioner Peter John said, all, all tax increases, all levels should be voted on by the people and I appreciate you, you bringing this to our attention, John.
John, real quickly, on House Bill 2570, we, we talked about 2568, I guess, at length on this mill levy idea, but 2570, can you please explain that quickly one more time, please?
It is, it is almost identical, except it's technical colleges rather than community colleges and, and actually technical colleges that are in the county in which the mill levy is proposed and the, the boards of those technical colleges would have the authority to do the same exact thing, two-mill levy up to five years for, essentially for capital improvement projects and then the same provisions regarding if, if, if the electors, once, once that intention is published, if the electors wish to put it to a vote, they've got to have petition 5%.
And do, do we know whether, whether revenue generated by a, a mill levy that, that they would impose, does all of that revenue go to the school that, that made the decision or is there some of that shared by, do, do Regents get involved and, and share some of that money with any other schools? Do we know?
The bill does not indicate that any of that money. It is, it, it, the, the way the bill reads is that it, it is intended to, and I think with, obviously with technical colleges, not as, not as big an issue because they're already, you know, in that county, but with the community colleges, it, you know, it'll establish a larger footprint.
It seems like there almost would be an incentive for schools anywhere in the state to, to set up a office here in Sedgwick County because they could essentially impose, potentially impose another two-mill levy on our county residents and so it doesn't require any type of, of, it doesn't describe how much operation they have in the county for them to do. I mean, every one of these colleges has, has a, a college county or a college seat, if you will, in, in some other community in, in their own counties, but all of them have offices here. It doesn't necessarily mean they do a lot of, a lot of classes here necessarily, but because they happen to have a, a satellite classroom, they, this, this qualifies them to potentially invoke this two-mill levy. Doesn't require any, any description on how much they're doing here in the county.
It, it is essentially described as a satellite campus, the definition of which is very amorphous.
Wow. I wonder if, I wonder if our, our tech schools and, and the community colleges and would like to set up satellites in other people's counties and exercise their option that way. But just a thought. I, I think we ought to be opposed to both of these. I would like to, whatever time it's the right time, but have a Commissioner's motion, I guess, to make that official. We would be strenuously opposed to both of these bills and, and hopefully we would be able to encourage the legislators not to, not to support these. By the way, I have had some discussions with some of the legislators on this. It sounds like these bills have a fair amount of interest. So I, I don't know that I would think these are not going to move forward. I, I'm, I'm very concerned about them. And by the way, just if those three colleges alone, three community colleges exercised, that would be six mills potentially for our county. So it's all additive. It's not like, it's limited to any one school and they could all do it.
Correct.
Right. All right. Commissioner Enruh, actually Commissioner Peter John was next.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna, since you didn't quite make the motion, I'm gonna make the motion that we come out in opposition to 2568 and 2570 in their current form. The idea that we could have a, this is the equivalent of a 20% property tax increase on, equivalent on the Sedgwick County, on, on Sedgwick County, on the Sedgwick County portion of the tax, property tax bill is just, is just a total outrage and I'm very disappointed that this is even getting serious consideration up in Topeka.
May I ask you to add to your motion that you'd authorize the chairman or the, or the designatedes and our, our lobbyists and our staff to, to submit testimony?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the chairman's amplification of my, my motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any, Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, yesterday in the staff meeting, you indicated that we didn't even know who the authors of this bill is.
As, as most affairs, things are in the legislature, they, you know, they come out as committee bills and so they're, they're, the, the authors of which, I, I find it interesting because the, the two issues, 451 and, and these issues, there, there can be a connection made because of the, of the, of the, you know, the insertion of a potential substitute bill on 451 would have kept a lot of the technical college stuff in with the community colleges, so...
Where would you have things?
This, I think they come from the same source, but I haven't identified which source that is.
Well, I, it's just totally absurd that this thing's even wasting ink to put it on a piece of paper. You know, one way you can test a theory is push it to its extreme conclusion. I suppose then the folks in favor of this would also vote in favor for Missouri imposing a tax on the state of Kansas.
I believe you and I discussed that on Monday, that that would, that, that it would be about the equivalent, as if the Missouri Assembly did that to us.
If you, if you push the thing to the extreme, I mean, it just, it is so, it is so absurd. It's, it's almost maddening that they'd even be thinking about it. So I'll be supportive of the motion.
Reminds me of the Boston Tea Party when Britain's trying to impose a tax on people across the ocean, so it's about the same idea. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Chairman Howell.
Aye.
We're still on legislative issues.
Conversely, and then it's, it's sometimes strange how these things happen, House Bill 2719 would change a lot of things with some of the smaller taxing authorities. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about 79, 2925B and elections with cities and counties regarding tax increases, but, you know, those things wouldn't necessarily trickle down to the smaller taxing authorities. Well, 2719 gets some of the really minute ones into, into a little bit of focus where things like airport authorities and recreation commissions and, you know, Board of Regents and Municipal Universities, that one, it would change requirements that the governing bodies that created those, it changes this child to a may as far as mill levy funding for those and that, you know, to the extent that, that they have the separate authority to impose a mill levy, that, that would go back to the authority that granted their existence. For example, the airport authority would have to then come back to, you know, and, and ask permission to have a mill levy increase. So it, it's, it's a little bit of a furtherance of some of those, those ideas put forth in things like Senate Bill 316 and it, it just seems to be a little bit opposite of what we just discussed, which is there's a constriction, there's an, there's an allowance at some, but there's some, some sort of oversight regarding either directly with the voters or through the governing body that created these smaller taxing authorities to, to have some oversight, to have some, you know, have some say in whether or not those increases do occur. So that, that's a, that's a, it's a relatively new bill. I know some of the smaller taxing authorities have contacted the clerk's offices, like, what exactly does, does this mean for us? So I've had some, this conversation with the clerk's office about this particular bill, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention that, you know, some of the discussions we've had about Senate Bill 316 and, and the, and the House bills that, that are all associated with that 7929, 2925B concept, that it's being expanded not upwards towards the legislature, but downwards towards the smaller taxing authorities. And then one last note, Senate Bill 316 is scheduled for further discussion and possible final action tomorrow.
Do we know whether House Bill 2609 has had any, it did have a hearing, anything, is there anything planned for that? Do we know?
There, I have not heard anything further about the bill being worked, no further possible discussion. I don't know that there's necessarily a race for one side or the other to get their bill out there, but I suspect that something will come out of the committee tomorrow on Senate Bill 316.
Okay. And just for the reminder for our listeners, Senate Bill 316 is, is being called the Tax Lit Bill. It's a cleanup bill that adjusts, I think, five of the exemptions that are in the current language. It was passed last year. It also speeds up the implementation to 2016 and Sedgwick County offered a, an amendment to this last week, last Tuesday in Topeka. Commissioner Peter John and myself traveled there and offered testimony, but our, our position is that the, the, the concept of the, of the language is really something we would support. However, we do need to have the option for an election. I think municipalities have that right to, to ask their, their constituents for the right to raise taxes above reasonable growth rates and so without, without their permission, they can raise it up to a threshold, but beyond that threshold requires a, a vote, which is currently not possible. So what we've done is we've offered amendment that moves deadlines around that would make the mail ballot election possible. So it's no longer a, a de facto lit, but simply voter empowerment is the way we would describe that. And furthermore, the implementation date, since we're already in 2016, the base bill this year speeds it up from 2018 to 2016, which we, we believe is not workable. So we're, we're asking for a 2017 implementation date, which I think all of our... date, which I think all of our, all of our departments have said does work for them, and they're willing to support a 2017 implementation date. We can certainly support that logistically. So, we think that's the right answer there. So, we've, we offered these ideas, and it sounds to me like that this is something that the, the committee seemed to be very favorable to when we were there. So, I anticipate those, those changes being adopted. Let me further say, I know our friends across the street, they, they have asked for reconstruction or remodeling costs to be calculated into the new construction, and I am personally supportive of that. I'm not sure the position of the board is here, but I think that that's a reasonable request, and I think I'm, I'm personally supportive of that. And I talked to some of the legislators last week, and the committee members, as well as the lobbyists. It sounds like there is, across the board, acceptance of that idea. So, there, I anticipate that will also be adopted when they work the bill. Any other comments from commissioners on legislative issues? With regard to Senate Bill 451, the merger bill, I guess, my, my, my hope is that we would develop a position, just, one of the things I think that we ought to, we ought to have a position that says that, should a merger proposal come forward through, through this bill, that Sedgwick County would have some, some ability to approve that merger. Because we're invested in both WSU and WATC NCAT, to the extent that we are, I think we ought to have some, some ability to understand the merger and be willing, or have the right, I guess, to, to, I know right now, the, the, the language out there says the Higher Learning Commission is who approves this. And so, there's no governing body who has any say on this. Even though this is our buildings, it's a tremendous investment by Sedgwick County. Every year, I think we ought to have some say, especially from the perspective of WATC NCAT. I think that, that gives us a, a right to, to approve that merger. I think we ought to have that right. So, I would like to see that be a position that we would take. To me, it's probably the most important, important, because the language that's going to be, or the agreement that would be developed by WATC and, and, or WSU, I want to, I want to ensure that we provide the same, similar access to the community in terms of cost of education and, and admission standards, so that our community that has traditionally accessed this, this technical education will continue to be able to access this opportunity. I think that's my, my most important part of this, but I want to ensure that that language is, is in place to protect that access to education. That's my concern. And as long as we see that in whatever language is developed, I, I think there may be a likelihood we would approve that. We, we need to be assured that that would be something that's protected in the, in the merger language. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I agree with your comments, and would just point out, if you add, Sedgwick County taxpayers, through Sedgwick County, we've got one and a half mill dedicated mill levy that goes to Wichita State University. And when you add that with the funding for the principal and interest for WATC NCAT, and the operational support that we provide, my ballpark figure is we're talking about over $11 million, or between, over two and a half, over two and a half, approaching three mills in terms of property tax support for those institutions in our community. So, Sedgwick County is involved in education in a very significant way. And so, if there are changes coming down the line, I need, I think we need to be very proactive in this area, and appreciate the chairman's comments.
So, with that, if there's no further discussion, I would, if not right now, then, then in a future meeting, I would like us to, to consider developing a position from the county that says that we, we would like to have some, some ability to approve the merger language before it's completed. And, and as the bill's currently written, there is no, there's no approval required by us, even though it impacts us in a great way. Commissioners, I don't see any further discussion on legislative issues. Thank you, Mr. Von Anchen, appreciate your good briefing this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
All right. Commissioners, do you have anything for other this morning? Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a few comments about today's editorial that was called Stand Up to Intolerance and Hate. Now, some out there may question the sincerity of the Eagle Editorial Board in this regard, but I, for one, am optimistic that this may be a sign of change, a change to where we are more tolerant and have less hate towards others. Because there's not a lot of tolerance and love out there for a lot of people. Now, if you're, happen to be an illegal alien or an immigrant from Syria, then there's lots of love out there for you. But if you're an immigrant who came here legally into the United States, spent time and money to get here the appropriate way, and then is, has a trouble with illegal aliens getting a pass, there's not much love for you. If you're a hardworking American out there who has lost his job to an illegal alien or seeing their wages lowered as revolt of illegal immigration, there's not much love out there for you. There's not much tolerance. If you're an American who sees the targeting of Christians in Middle East countries, and Christians who are being raped and murdered because of their Christianity, and you have concerns about the safety of your family as Syrian refugees are brought to America without any consultation from local or state officials, there's not much love and tolerance for you out there. If you're a taxpayer who is struggling to make ends meet, and you want the government to live within its means and stop raising your taxes to pay for these ever-growing government interventions in our lives, and you, and you say something about that, there's not much love and tolerance for you out there. If you're an elected official who wants to stand up for his community and say, I have a concern about possible terrorist attacks in our community, because we know that there are ongoing investigations, and we should be aware, there's not much love and tolerance for you out there. If you're a woman who comes before this commission that talks about female genital mutilation, because you're concerned about what's going on in our community, there's not much love and tolerance for you. If you're someone who has a different viewpoint, or you want to exercise your free speech, in a lot of areas in academia, there's not a lot of tolerance and love for you. If you believe in Christian values, constitutional principles, core American values, and you express those values, there's not a lot of love and tolerance for you out there, no. So, I will say to the Wichita Eagle and others, let's stand up to tolerance and hate, no matter where it comes from. Let's be sincere in that, and understand that people with different ideas and values aren't just a bunch of racist bigots. They are Americans who have honest concerns about a wide variety of issues that are going on in our community. And what you're seeing, there's a lot of frustration in America, because people won't listen. You have this establishment in both the left and the right, and that includes much of the media and our universities, et cetera. They just want to call people names and say you're a racist and bigot for having any of these values, or having any of these concerns. And they're not. They're hardworking Americans who have a difference of opinion. So, if we truly want to, if the Wichita Eagle Editorial Board truly wants to stand up to intolerance and hate, and I hope they really do, then I would say the first step they need to take is take a look in the mirror. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hadn't planned to, to get into comments in today's newspaper. I was still celebrating the good feelings from a basketball game in my state where I went to college, in Dayton, Ohio, last night. But, I, let me begin this way, by saying, you know, March 16th is an important day in American history. And I want to point out a few important facts that have occurred on March 16th. Has some connection here to Wichita in a sense, and certainly for our neighbors over in Reno County even more so. Fellow by the name of Robert H. Goddard, on March 16th, 1926, launched the first liquid fuel rocket at a farm, farm in Auburn, Massachusetts. Now, Goddard had been fascinated by HG Wells, War of the Worlds, and had tinkered around in this area. But, he came up with a rocket that, by current standards, was really almost less impressive than some of the fireworks we have whenever there's a community celebration. Went only 60 miles an hour, and only went 41 feet in the air, and only landed 184 feet away. But, pretty soon, that idea that he grew into, and the work that he continued until his death in 1945, his work became the foundation for all of mankind's exploration into space. And of course, the Goddard Space Flight Center in Greenville, Maryland, was named in his honor. I'd also point out, on March 16th, that the United States Congress authorized the establishment of the U.S. Military Academy at West Point on this date in 1802. And, interestingly enough, on March 16th, 1995, astronaut Norman Thaggard became the first American to visit the Russian Space Station Mir. So, March 16th's an important date in American history, and I wanted to get that on the record, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate Commissioner Ranzau's remarks, and would be, we'll, we'll save my comments for a later date, because as a person who grew up in, in the 20th century, I've seen a lot of hate and intolerance on college campuses in the 1960s and 70s. The Marxists, the Alinsky-ites of that era, were, were, they didn't have the power that they have now that they've kind of gone into positions of authority in, in the culture and in academia and in the media and many other places. But, to quote the sage Yogi Berra, when I see the hate and intolerance out in today's environment, and the fact that unfortunately, people are getting killed, there was certain atrocities that occurred in San Bernardino from Islamic jihadists who unfortunately killed 14 people and injured many, many more. In the words of Yogi Berra, unfortunately, it's déjà vu all over again. And, and I just hope that one of my responsibilities as an elected official is working to keep this community safe, and that remains a priority for me. So, I'll just include my remarks in that, on that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me just raise another issue, that this is more information for the listeners on the television. I hope that they will write this one down. As I look out in the audience today, I see more members of the media than I do see people from the community here. And, and one thing that I have wanted to do as commissioner, since I've been here, was try, try to move these meetings in such a way that we can actually invite the people from the community in a way that makes sense. We have our meetings typically on Wednesday mornings at 9:00, but a lot of folks that would like to participate in our meetings, or come and talk to commissioners, or even see us face to face and have a, a discussion with us, are most, many of them are at work, and they can't be here. So, one of the things I've done is I've asked commission staff and, and my colleagues to support the idea of having in district meetings in the evening. And these, these aren't going to happen all the time, but we'll see a number of these throughout the year. We're going to start, the very first one will be March, excuse me, April the 18th, April the 18th, it'll be in Derby at the Derby Welcome Center at 611 North Mulberry Road, Suite 200. And if, if familiar with Derby, that's just a little bit west of the intersection of Madison and Rock Road. On the north side of the street, there's a nice facility there that has the senior center, the welcome center, and the Derby City, City Building, all in one facility. So, the welcome center is a nice, large facility there in the middle of that. We're going to be meeting there. We'll have a meet and greet. It starts at 6:00 PM. The commissioners hopefully will all be there, ready to talk to constituents, and people who are interested in, in meeting us face to face. We'll be there to talk about whatever is interesting to people who will come. Of course, the meeting will begin officially at 6:30. We'll do, we'll conduct regular business at that meeting. Of course, we're always interested in hearing from the community. They'll have the chance to speak to us on any issue that they find important. There'll be a, a public, a public commentary option for people to sign up and address the commission staff, so, our commissioners. With that said, I want to make sure that this is, I'll probably talk about this every week from now until, until it happens, just hopefully try to get some air, get, get some interest in this, and hopefully, people will, will write, write this on the calendars, and will, will meet, meet with us on, at these, at these evening meetings. And so, first one will be in April the 18th at 6:00 PM is our meet and greet. Meeting officially starts at 6:30. That will be at Derby, at the Derby Welcome Center, 611 North Mulberry Road, Suite 200. So, I'd encourage you, everyone throughout the community, to hopefully come out to that meeting and visit with you there. The other thing I wanted to bring up, again, there was some action this last week on the law enforcement training center. I only want to mention, I guess, just one point here, and that is, you know, the, the Eagle editorial staff did write an editorial on this. I guess I wanted to answer just a couple of quick questions. Number one, we're committed to this as much as we ever have been, Sedgwick County. We just need to let the process work. So, we're going to, the bid board should hopefully, you know, open these bids and deliberate on, on these options, and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners very soon. And when that's done, at some point, the Board of County Commissioners will also, in an open meeting, receive that recommendation. We will also deliberate and hopefully reach a decision, at which point, we will work with the city to hopefully come to terms on all, whatever that agreement might include. There have been no decisions by the county commission as of this time, but we will certainly be doing that as soon as possible. Having said that, we're just, I just wanted everyone to know that we're committed to this. The editorial staff makes a point that this has been an ongoing discussion, or a need for 17 years. We understand that. We are, we're not pulling away. We're not going to kick this can down the road. We're gonna, we're going to develop a solution we think is best, and hopefully, find a way to agree with the city on that. So, that is coming up. We are committed to that as much as we ever have been. We did need to push the, the date back for the deliberations on these proposals, back to May 18th. So, between now and May 18th, it's our current proposal, that we will, in fact, be able to reach a decision and hopefully, agree with the city. And so, that's where we're at on that. So, let's be encouraged. This is good news. We're, we're doing our job, and doing it in an open and transparent way. We're going to lean forward to a solution. We're committed to that. That's all I want to say about that. Commissioners, anything else that you'd like to raise before we dismiss today? Seeing none. Manager, is there anything else you want to raise?
No, sir.
I don't think we have a need for a fire district meeting or for an executive session, so with that, I think we are adjourned. See you next week. Thank you.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write